I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
All right, I could call for motion except the consensus agenda items as submitted. It has been moved in seconded, anything to separate or vote on itself? All right, all those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Post abstaining, motion carries. All right, call for motion except the personnel items as submitted. I'll second it. Anything to discuss or vote on separately? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Post abstaining, motion carries. Capitol Project Committee?
We don't really get much new, we have a couple projects going on right now.
The planning.
Is it from the Capitol Project or is that from the?
No, the smart schools, smart schools, we're finishing up the cameras.
Are you testing each one of them yourself? Doing action shots?
I hope not, no, there's enough of those pictures.
Dancing? All right, Policy Committee? All right, there's a first reading of the following policies. Sixty-one twenty, the equal employment opportunity policy. Sixty-one twenty-one, sexual harassment in the workplace. Seventy-five fifty, dignity for all students. Seventy-five fifty-three, hazing of students. Eighty-one thirty, equal education opportunities. Eighty-two twenty, career and technical occupational education. Fifty-six thirty-three, gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms. And seventy-five fifty-one, sexual harassment of students. Coming from a standing committee, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of any of the policies or any questions you have? All right then, all those in favor then, accepting the policies as submitted, please say aye. Aye. Post abstaining, motion carries. Yes. Ex official student members report, she is not here, but should probably be.
She did give me one thing.
Did she? Okay, go ahead.
I spoke to Marissa today and she asked if I, she had both school sport and soccer. She asked if I could just pass along to everyone that tickets are on sale for prom. Not unusual, ticket sales are usually slow at first, but she's really encouraging our classmates to purchase prom tickets. They did, if you remember, she mentioned at the last meeting, survey, students had a time to make sure that they had an adequate number. Booked for the prom and they did, so she just wanted me to pass that along, please encourage people to purchase their prom tickets.
Okay. All right, presence report. There is nothing much to report other than, you know, thank you everyone who supported the, recognize my reelection. The other part is that Dan and I were just discussing this was NISBA for the summer, the convention. We need probably start planning now, how maybe we're gonna have going and stuff. Bob, Dan and myself said yes. All right. Okay. We usually go single, but.
Can you send the dates back out to the group? Thank you.
Can I have my date?
We'll go over to Superintendent for his report.
Thank you. Okay, a few things, first, we are, we did sign an agreement, I did, I think it was the day, America went across, we sign one every few years. Just in case there's ever an emergency in the area where they need and require use of our facilities. We, like many districts do, offer up our facilities in the case of emergency. A few CDEP reminders, one, this Friday is the Glow Dance Party. All elementary students in the district will receive something in their backpacks. Both the notification, also the glow stick that'll be able to use when they take part in the Glow Dance Party. Again, that's a completely virtual dance party. And we have a DJ and some really great work by that, some committee to put that together, should be pretty exciting. And the schools are doing some things to kind of build it up as we get a little bit closer to the event within, in the school, with kids picking songs and that sort of, which is neat. So it's Friday night, on Saturday, we have the Eco Campus Revitalization Project, that's right here on the high school, middle school campus. From eight to eleven. It's for families and students who are high school or middle school age. We will be doing a cleanup, we'll be doing a, we'll be doing some plantings of seedlings, we'll be planting a tree. There'll be a bench and a, that was donated, and the reading library that will be put out along the path. There may be some mulching and so, and the cleanup itself, so, pretty exciting. We ask people to get out there and then help, we should have a really, we're hoping for a really good turnout. The weather looks great, probably, I think the high that day, it looks like it's seventy-five, so, at that time in the morning, probably sixties, you know, those sixties, should be beautiful, that kind of work. The, if you look, what's that? Nope, don't worry, if you, no, I was just gonna say, if you go up here to our website, you can see, there's, no, you don't have to sign up ahead of time. But if you, on our website currently, there are pictures from some of the past revitalization projects. We've been doing these twice a year and COVID, of course, got in the way. There's some really great long-term plans that we have, we're working with a Pella Osborne, I think I mentioned before, who is a landscape architect. Who is doing a long-term plan for the path and hopefully in the future, we have a boardwalk that goes out over El Crick, which will be a great space, classroom space for kids. Pretty exciting. And, and what's really neat, been neat about this venture is the, the groups that have worked with us, the Greenway Commission is one, and then a few of the other groups who have now become really involved with our school, with our campus. I know Mr. Kramer was just back there with his class and he had some representatives from some of the different government organizations back there, working with him as they were doing some classroom work, so. But those are some of the, some of the benefits that have, that did come along with this, with this project.
You said they didn't have to sign up though?
You do not have to sign up ahead of time, when you get there that morning, when you get there that morning, you'll sign up and we'll assign you to different activities.
All right, so what is this website, go to the website, sign up?
Oh, I wanna just put this up on the website and I was going to mention that when you get there, you're gonna sign up.
Okay.
So what'll happen is, we, we have certain activities that we wanna, especially the, the seedlings being planted, that we wanna have done first. So as people come in, we'll assign activities like, almost like an assembly line, to plant all the seedlings, different people have different responsibilities. Once we have enough people to do those activities, then we'll assign people for cleanup, for mulching, you know, those projects, so we'll see how many people we get and determine how much we can really done. The graduation update, I don't know that the time's been set, once it is, it'll certainly go out to families, I know that they were talking about eleven o'clock that day, but I don't know that that's been finalized. Here, here's what we're wrestling with a little bit, as of right now, as we sent the last meeting. There's a requirement for vaccination, testing or that you've had the virus and are, you know, feeling well, have recovered, within ninety days. Those are the three things that have to happen to attend an event with the numbers that we're gonna have that day. So as of right now, we're going to set up the testing for all of our students who are not vaccinated or don't get tested on their own. But, the type of testing that we're using is the VINX test, those tests have to be given within six hours of the event. So, if we did this even earlier in the morning, which some might argue would even be a little bit better, because of the sun, you know, it can get pretty warm, especially on turf. But if we move it up too early, we might not be able to get everybody in and get them tested beforehand, okay? So, eleven o'clock seems like a pretty good time, that's the time that I know was our draft time, once that's finalized, I know the high school put that out. As far as vaccinations are concerned, you may have seen that some of the schools in our county have had vaccine testing happening on the school campuses, okay? That is being determined right now by the, either county health department. They are selecting the areas that they know to have the lowest concentration of vaccinations and are going into those areas first, okay? We, we just heard from the health department yesterday that they actually have tests. And if we had somebody to administer the tests, say one of the pharmacies could come in, they wouldn't, the pharmacy wouldn't need to supply the tests, but they could certainly, but we could get the tests from the county. We could certainly host an event like that. The county just isn't, isn't ready or doesn't feel the need at this point right now to come into wheat field. So again, they're going by the areas that they believe have had the least amount of vaccination accessibility. So, that's certainly something we can look at, I will also say, we, we put out there that over the summer, especially, you know, the month of August. We'd be very interested before the start of school of hosting an event for our school, maybe the people who don't, you know, who haven't had that. Certainly we'll have people whose ages would be changing and maybe be accessible, the vaccine would be accessible to them and it wasn't before. So, that's vaccines. Our next meeting, June second, we are going to have our retiree recognition during the meeting. So, the, the way that'll work is this, we're waiting for all the RSVPs to come back. Depending on the numbers, we may have to do like a little bit of staging, just because of the number of people that we can have capacity wise in this area. We, we have asked that they don't bring additional guests, because we're actually bringing in two classes in essence of retirees. But we sent out letters for two classes, those who retired last year and those who retired this year. And not knowing how many people would come, we had to, you know, unfortunately, limit the, limit the event. We will have cookies, we'll have bottled water, we can have lunch, but, you know, we'll have water and iced teas and that sort of, bottled drinks. So that's exciting, that'll be on June second. On June sixteenth, we will be recognizing last year's group of, of those who we see tenured, because we didn't have the opportunity to recognize them, so we'll be bringing them in. The, today was the first day of the two-day National Junior Otter Society induction, it took place at twelve o'clock. Today went very well, I know that they did have an interruption, I guess, in the service of the live stream, but they got that right back up and running. It wasn't when the students were being called, so that was good, but at least the timing did interrupt that. But tomorrow is the second day, or whatever, I don't know who's tomorrow. Again, I did send the website out if you were interested. One of the things that we're spending quite a bit of time as a, as a district, district leadership team right now doing, is putting together our plan for the SFR funds. It's, it's quite involved. We initially had to put in assurance, that assurance is, that we would follow many different standards that are set. We've done that, by June fifteenth or sixteenth, is it fifteenth? Does that sound right? Fifteenth, we actually have to have the application in. So our plan is to have something in place to share with you at the June second meeting, right? So that we can get that in, into the, to the state. That said, like with all grant work, there's always opportunities later from admins and that sort of thing, but we do have to have a plan by, by June fifteenth to how we plan to allocate our resources. This is only for the SFR two. Today, I didn't even get a chance to look at it, today, some information came off from New York State on SFR three, which was the third round. What have more for next meeting or that? But again, it's, it's quite involved, we will make sure that we're in a good place to not only utilize those funds, but also report the funds that we've utilized, so we make sure that we're, that we can sue all those funds back. I said a number of times, say it again, food service now until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, free for all students. Who knows what'll happen after June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two? Equity and Education Committee, we had our last meeting yesterday morning and we want to move the presentation to the board. I'd like to do that in one of the June meetings or first July meeting, I don't know if you have a preference, but we'll certainly make whatever work that we can.
Any, any?
Any choice? Do we wanna do the first or the second on the, the first, I think there's a chance that we're gonna have more people than we will for the second?
The second.
Because of the number of retirees.
Is anyone going to the baseball game on the sixteenth? The tickets?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Any questions, Superintendent?
Yes, so those, the, 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 the next test, they, they gave those to us. So we, yeah, that's great, they gave us six hundred, just in case, initially we knew that we would have both graduation and prom potentially taken care of because of the lower numbers. Right now at prom, we wouldn't need that extra test before prom, so.
All right, any, any items for board discussion? Going back to NISBA, Maureen sent me the dates, it's the twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth of October, which seems weird to me, because that's a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. And it's on NISBA's site, that's twenty, the twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, so. Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. Which is a Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. It's always been Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Sitting in tree law on a Sunday though? Did I say that out loud? All right, any other buttons for board discussion? Yeah. So if you guys, if you, the five, the four of us will go, I know it's five, I didn't know Dan, the five of us, I don't think Rick said he was gonna go. I'll exchange, we'll confirm with him and you two will check on that. Yeah, party bus, pick one of the school, school buses. Allison can drive.
We don't have vans.
All right, any old business? All right, new business? So, you basically wouldn't be able to put a board member on any committee, or is that what it is? To assign a board member to a committee that's in the school, that's not of the, not a committee of the board then? All right, so, right now, according to board guidelines and, and I mean, New York State law, is that if you wanna go into the school for any functionality, we have to have a motion at the board to do so. You just wanna have a blanket policy that allows us to do that whenever? And so what would be the purpose of observing? So, but things that come to us have to come to us under a recommendation of the superintendent, so we are then gonna bypass the superintendent to do, to have things?
No, I think because of the state's interest, I think we have to do a board member, to give them access to what's going on.
So why wouldn't a board member then just apply as a community member to the committee? Any thoughts from any other board members?
What other, what other committees?
I don't know, I mean.
Other than the Equity and Education.
I mean, I'd sat in on the Capitol Project.
But that's a committee of the board?
It is, I know.
So, things that involve the committee, if we have a student serving on any committee in the school, I don't think that's involved in the committee. That could be like, what, a couple dozen committees that we have throughout the year that run that, has that done?
I, we'd have to pull a list.
Yeah. I, I, I don't, I mean, without us as a board following state law that says that for us to enter a building as a, in a board capacity, we would need to have a motion of the board and then to alert the superintendent with a timely manner of that, that, that need. Really, a, a policy like that would circumvent that, that part of, you know, of board governance. I mean, that's, it's, it's almost as though we're saying let's throw out board governance and what we are supposed to be doing, to just allow us to go in and out as, as we want.
Just put your face, you should probably just do the board math.
Yeah. Well, no, I mean, what, I think in, in your regards, that if there's a meeting that you're gonna have interest in, because there's something that is being discussed or that you are, that could come, possibly come to the board, that you wanna listen to how that, that generated and came to the board. You wanna be able to have access to that without basically the board approving and setting a date to go and do, observe such meetings. And actually, we wouldn't actually go in, in that role, I mean, our, our entrance to the school in the board capacity is, is limited to the, again, as in board capacity. As a board member, it would be when we do our annual district inspection, in which we must alert. Are you, if you're walking through and make, in observing that the school is functioning in a capacity that has been voted on by the taxpayers and it appears that the school is spending money and operating in a way that is conducive to what a school should be? And that's basically what that piece is for. You know, we as board members, we don't cer, we receive recommendations from the superintendent and information from the superintendent as the liaison to the school. I mean, the minute we start going into a capacity where we're gonna sit on committees in there that, where we're not community members sitting on those, that's why you apply to serve on those. You, you now are circumventing the need in the purpose of having a superintendent. You know, everything that we vote on, on here, every report that comes is that, okay, are we accepting this report that's being given to us from CDEP? All right, it's upon the recommendation of the superintendent that we accept this report. We are, he is the only employee of the board who we say, all right, you are to go run the school, you are our voice, our eyes and ears on those committees, or is designate. And we then are reported back to by the superintendent for that. It's, our, our role of board governance is, is that, it's a, it's a governance of the board here, it's not a governance of the day-to-day or operation of the school. So, I mean, to sit in and be able to go in and listen to what, how they're discussing items there, really would circumvent the, the whole dynamic of what we have played in place for school administration. Yeah, go ahead.
It, it feels to me like we would be sending a message that we don't talk, what teams have done to us as, that's what's happening. I, I feel like popping to something a little like, I don't wanna say arrogant, but arrogant, like I can come in and I can come and go as I please, because I just kinda wanna check on what's happening. So I, I don't necessarily feel like that's our place to do that.
I think it should be, it should be more, you know, so, there's agents, um, and I would say, the more information and tools over there. You might get a, you know, some information, which is what's happened in the community, whether in the works, that's what they, that would be uncomfortable.
I feel like anytime we have asked for any further clarification or made a suggestion, we've always been given what we've asked for.
I'm the same, and just someone to one, you know, that's, yeah, what's the, but I'll come back and say, you know, a lot more of your, for, for, for allowing to go and work.
Why, if you then just apply as a community member and then you have that aspect, you're chosen.
Well, that was like, once before, it was, but maybe somebody else has time, which they commit.
Well, I mean.
All the meetings that have four, they have overseas.
But the board is no more, in, in that capacity, going there, you're not active, you're, you're not, you can't go as an individual board member to that because you're not, it, it's not something that the board would act upon. It's not a duty of the board to observe a, a, a committee that is not a standing committee of the, of, of this organization, of this, of this body. And I'll tell you what, it's gonna be challenged very quickly by, at, at state level, because that's not what the role of a board is. You sit in daily governance meetings like that, that the district runs, it is not a standing committee, it's not one of the four standing committees that exist for a school board. You know, I mean, I want support, I'll just put it that way. You know, I. All right, I mean, that's basically what it is. We don't make that. And to, in response to your having more information. You are able at any time to submit questions to the superintendent for clarification before a meeting, for them to be shared with you. So for example, you know, okay, let's be honest, you, you have, there's a, is a topic that really interests you in the sense of how this committee's run and what the outcome of it could be. So, here are the questions, were these things, were these topics discussed at all? Were the, was this item brought up, how was this discussed? Who, who was the lead on this, was this something that's coming from administration, teacher, whatever? And Owen, Rick and I had the conversation, you know, he, he asked about a certain thing about curriculum and I said, we as a district, I can tell you right now, that's not in our curriculum, but, you know, you could ask. Is there a teacher in our school that could possibly be discussing this? These are, you know, questions that can be sent to the superintendent ahead of time, so that he is able then to research that and then provide that information. These are, uh, su- you know, questions that could be sent to the superintendent ahead of time, so that he is able then to research that and then provide that information to you. And that is, then does not disrupt the daily, the daily operation of the school building. It keeps us within what our role is from, as defined as school board members in New York State, as trustees. And not as a gover- we are not a governing body. It's, it's, if we remember back to our, our board governance training. You know, we are a, a, a board of trustees which operates under recommendation of the superintendent, who we hire, um, as our only employee. So, I know it's not, you know, it does not seem conducive in, in, in people's minds that this is how business is done here because. All right, we hear this report, but you know, if you, if that report's not enough, provide questions. To seek, you know, clarification and more information for it.
Yeah, I guess.
Which is the community you're part of as, just as we are members of the community. So, my second piece of that is, then if you don't have the time to put in for it and you didn't care for that the time. We ha- we have no more authority or, or, um. Added benefit of being a board member than Joe Schmo out in the community when it comes to anything that's going on. Only when we are meeting here together do we have any authority or. I mean, there's no special treatment that we get outside of being here. You know, and that would be special treatment if we're allowed to go and sit on that, because we would not, you as a superintendent would not allow, you know, Mary Smith to come in and say, hey, I wanna go and observe this meeting. You know, because I, I didn't have the time to put in for this, you know, to, to be a community member, but now I'm interested in it, I wanna hear it. You know, we are simply community members when we are not part of this gathering right here. Um, and so likewise, I. We wouldn't, there's no benefit, there's no added. Um. What the term would be. Yeah, well, not perk, but there, you know, there, there's no advantage we would get of being able to go in and just say, we're gonna sit in here because we're board members and we need to be more informed. Now, it's. Or could disrupt the day-to-day operation of the school very easily too.
Well, it's not a good thing, I mean, I, either such a function that we've had. Obviously, we're part of, you see the internet. Be able to gain, you know, working with that, we are the team. Direct contact. With the school. If you really want to buy that, do that. Well, I just get over that, to take it. Then, then do more information for us, I think it would help us.
But we are not, we're not elected to be the, the contact of the community of the school. We are, we, we hired the superintendent to be the contact. Or of that. You know, we, again, there's no, there's no authority we have other than to direct people to the superintendent. So I mean, if they have a concern that comes with us, the first thing that needs to be said then is, you need to bring your concern to the superintendent. If, when you bring your concern to the superintendent, at that point, you do not like what the response is, or you don't like the direction it's going, then they bring the concern about the superintendent not being able to address their concern to us. Because then we address it with the superintendent as though he is the employee that we have. Say over. Um, you know. It, it's, again, the board governance piece is, it's very specific with what our, what our duties are and what our roles are. And I know that it's, there's a, there's a fine line, um, between overstepping those, those roles and. Overstepping what we employ a. A superintendent for and what we as board members are limited to do. And as board members, we are, we are limited to being the trustees of the board to do very simple things, approve. And make sure that upon the recommendation of superintendent, what we are approving is following the standards and guidelines of New York State law for education. So, did they have, did the superintendent form a committee for such and such thing? Did he conduct interviews correctly? Did this go on? When we get here with recommendation, the personnel report or those other items. We know that he did because he gives us a report that, that this is what went on. Um, when it comes to finances, we sit here as, uh, the committee for finances, not in watching the day-to-day operation of the money exchanging school, uh, for the school, but we set the budget. We s- we set the tax rate, we determine the tax rate. And we then get reports throughout the year about our finances in which we are presented by the superintendent or his designee to make sure that we are. Not expending our budget past the amount that we had set. And those are our duties as, as board members. Sitting on that committee. Let's be honest, you, you don't, you, there's some things that could come out of that committee that you're not gonna like it because of personal beliefs. Am I correct? Um, I can, I'm sure we can assume though that's why the interest then all of a sudden though in this, I mean. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just curious in where that direction's coming from, because I mean, if it's not that piece, then what is the, what is the, the motivation to all of a sudden be on there? Because I can tell you that I know about ten committees off the top of my head that have met this past month, that we've had a report or the past two months, that we've had reports that came from the superintendent or from his designees that we've, that there's been no interest in. I mean, I, but yet, why this one? So you're not concerned about viewpoints being able to be expressed on any of the other committees then?
Well, I'm sure this one's done. Yeah, I got you.
Go ahead.
First of all, I mean, I wanna make it really clear that, um, the, the committee that I'm actually a part of, because I don't just jump into this committee, but as the superintendent, I can jump into any committee meeting or walk into any classroom. Okay, but as a super, the superintendent who actually serves on this committee, started this committee, I'll tell you that there hasn't been one viewpoint from any of the people that chose to sit on that committee that haven't been heard, not one. So, if anyone was to, and I don't, I agree that you, board members shouldn't be able to just pop into committee meetings. Um, however, what I, what I would say is, if the only goal was to come in there to hear if viewpoints were, weren't being able to be shared, anybody who joined that committee, all of their viewpoints are heard. Um, whether that's in our large group, when we present back out, or whether that's in our two subgroups that we have, the two subcommittees, um, it's very open. Uh, we have students on there, we have parent, uh, community members, um, and then we have staff members. So, um, it just to tell you, um, from me, that, um, it's very open and they, that's actually one of, the, the idea of Equity and Education Committee was so that. There could be that very open communication about a lot of different topics and so it's very open.
Yeah, I suppose.
Again, why that one though over?
Well, and, and that's like reporting.
Any, any, any committee that reports their, um, likes, you know, community involvement. And then just.
We, we can, he serves on the committee and he's the superintendent, we can direct any questions we want to him at any point. And where I, again, the, the point that I'm bringing though. Any community member at that time when they were being solicited could have joined, including any board member as a community member. The avenue is there to serve on those committees. There is, there should be no special circumstances or privilege for a board member to join on there at, at any time that they want to, when they are given that chance to.
Yeah.
But, again, no other person is allowed to come in and observe besides our superintendent we hired. Or as a community member. Doesn't matter if a board of ed or not. And what do you thi- why do you think it, as a board member, you have something better or above what anyone else's? That are, um, on recommendations of the superintendent, so you're saying you don't trust the superintendent's recommendations then?
I just think if, so saying you were allowed to fit in, what do you do with the information that's provided? What if you hear something that you don't like?
So even if it doesn't affect the final outcome of what the committee decides, but because someone said something in there that you didn't approve of or didn't care for, that would affect your?
No. I wouldn't make it something sad.
But that's basically what you just said.
Well, I'm the same kind of, you know, that's just how, that's what they just think about. So, like, um. Like, if they're, they have sausage to eat. To have a better idea of. Where the people are going on. On issues that are intended for.
I guess I see it as, if you wanna have an opinion on what's keeping place in there, then you should be in active. That's the part of it. So like, I don't agree that, I don't think us being able to pop in with this, with a good connection to the center of this network. I think if you want to be able to have active dialogue and, and, you know, I guess express whether you like or dislike what you're talking about, you gotta play the part, you gotta do that, you gotta show up. And you gotta show that these things are important to me and I wanted to discuss the part of it. So I think, I think what you're looking, you're gonna look for new people soon anyway, right? For next year maybe? So.
I haven't put out yet who's interested in coming back.
Well, I'm just saying, there, there will be an opportunity at some point.
Sure.
And I think that, you know, that, if it's that important to you.
Well, yeah, it comes down to that. And that's, I, once again, as in, maybe it's not this committee, maybe it's something down the road, there's things that are twisted. And nothing in time, maybe we still know this for a while, and maybe, maybe still have, um. The time to be a, a full-time committee member, that it may be. Um, that the board would have. Face of, of, like, the transparency that's to be able to fit in and in this year. But I don't think it's, it's not amazing. Yeah, I think I can. I got, I guess I would like to, to be different about reading about something in the newspaper, it's not considered my witness. Different, uh, news, dynamic information. I mean, that's a hypothetical, it's just something that, once again, I'd like you to say that. More information is better than looking.
So then, by giving questions to superintendent and having him provide feedback that you would be interested in, that's your more information, wouldn't it be?
That would be more. Like I just said, um. Like, I'm agreeing something from the newspaper, right, giving a secondhand account person to get to himself.
Yeah, but the newspaper, you're not able to ask specifically the questions that you want. You're held by what is being provided. Well, I mean, this is a poll of board, I know, I wouldn't support any policy like that, um.
Well, I'm not saying it wasn't worth it. I just wanted to bring up.
Done.
No, I think that you've got these committees. Throughout the board, you have, you have, plus, and there's empower these committees to do this. I'm just like, for students and, I just, it's a huge, it's a big, everything. We don't trust and empower these people. And we're just, you know. And I think that if anything came to the board that we have questions, and then we're asking, we don't have to vote necessarily, that's just a phase of it, and assuming of a thing, if there's something that's specific that pops. I wouldn't agree with something, just because the newspaper said as well, if I didn't feel comfortable, I mean, I would have to go after that deal and say, hmm, it's not even a meeting to do this. I don't think, uh, these non-participants, any good. To, 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 to. And with myself, I walked in, if we had a, cannot come into our executive. And they, they can't, so why is it they wanna do that? Here, this, if somebody's listening to me, they're gonna answer. And that's more, it's sort of a process.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, that's it.
Maybe not.
Now, I think, yeah, yeah.
Maybe not a good example, but I'm just saying, you have an outsider who has interest in that, this, in the topic. And if they have a chance, trying to go in, they can just tell you, they have an avenue for that person. So, and, as superintendent, there are avenues for these committees. In the same light.
Right, I'm just saying, if, if they're in a committee, if they're looking for more information, I, I, I feel like, as a board member, trying to get more information, or something like, then, trail around it from being able to simply observe. You know, I could submit flexible, there, I want to, yeah, that's the question. That's, I keep on, I keep on thinking that it's only one of the reasons, you know. They're, no.
Well, just remember, if any of us had, we'd have, we'd all would have been told no, so regardless of why we wanted to be there, the answer would have been no.
I'm the same, I'd have came before, before the board, asked for.
If you wanted to make a motion to do it and, and do so, yes, you could. And again, my, I would have assumed that the superintendent at that point would have probably said, this is not what is allowed in the school sit- standard, because you. Why, there is no. You go through your board governance and think of what we are, there's us, the superintendent, there's the rest of the school. Any committee that goes on in that school, it's not a board of ed committee, uh, committee. It is the day-to-day operations of the school led by the superintendent or his designees to garner whatever information is, could be. Teachers and, and, and parents who serve on, um, you know, school spear committee to parents and teachers and students who serve on, you know, this committee or one for health and wellness that's not part of the board. Remember, there's, there's, we are, we only have four committees that are board committees, safety, health, wellness for the board, and there's a district level one that's there. There is the audit, there is, uh, policy, and then there's capital, capital project. Those being said, even that, we are limited ourselves on those committees. We cannot have more than three members. The minute you have a fourth, you have a quorum, and if anyone wanted to challenge that and cause a big stink with the number of people that were there, you couldn't. So if I wanted to say, well, hey, I wanna be an informed member to come there, but I, I'm not one of those three, but if I could make better decisions at the board when I vote, if I'm there. Yeah, you, you can't. It's, it, again, you're, you're prohibited from, by law, that states that if you have, the minute you have a fourth, you have a quorum, you have to have an agenda, you have to. Post the agenda, you have to call, or call the, uh, tell the community that they're able to come and be able to follow your normal, um, board agenda, uh, through that meeting. These things that go on in the school, whether it's the Equity and Education Committee, the fact that we have a superintendent who does solicit outside people for it because he feels that that's important is a benefit to the district. There are many superintendents out there, I can name a couple right here in, at the Niagara Frontier League schools, who have no interest in community involvement in their schools whatsoever, and there'll be teachers and students and administrator on there, and that's it. You know, here's a report to the board, to, to the super, the superintendent's office for that, uh, of whatever topic they're discussing. We as board members are no different when it comes to day-to-day things. So even if we said, we wanted, if we wanted to have someone go in there, you're now violating your, say, violating your oath of law, you're basically saying. So, even if we said, we wanted, if we wanted to have someone go in there, you're now violating your, say, violating your oath of, you're basically saying that we as board members are above the community, above a regular citizen, which we are not, we are only a board of education when we're meeting here like this. So, to say, I need more informa- there, there, there's no privilege that you will have as a board member to go into a school and be able to sit in a, in a meeting like that. We can't, we, it would be basically us saying that we're, we're above the community members. We're above anyone who comes in off the street and says to, you know, to Jeff White, cause there's a meeting going on in the school, I'm, I'm, hey, there's a board member in there that was allowed to go in there, I'm the same as them, equal to them when they're not meeting as a board, why am I not allowed in there? And now we're creating this big debacle of, how to say it, um, creating privilege because of us, because of what, because of what we serve on here? Cause that's a privilege then.
I think it really undermines the process. The process is that maybe, that they go through the process, so, they come out with a conclusion. We can, we can question it when they come out with it, and then, so Dan, what about this and that? But if they actually stop in and say something, it's undermining the whole process.
You have to face something.
Well, I mean, you, you found it. You know, I mean, it's just our presence there is, is undermining the process. So, if the process is set in place, Dan sets up a committee, they go through the committee and get a result, we hear the results, if there's something we want to question, we give it to Dan. Dan, what about you? And if he'll come back out and tell us, give us, give us an answer. But that's the way it, it functions. I mean, that, that, that's the way it should be. We shouldn't be able to undermine process, like, like, saying, well, we're above this, and we, we really don't, we're, we're selling them, we really don't expect, don't respect your, you, in your community. So, I, I, I just. Well, that's what it, that's what it comes down to.
I don't know, I, I guess the goal, I think it is, they do their transparency, and the board members, they have to, they have to.
Transparency is, they, they come to us and tell us what they, they, the results are. But that's the transparency, we hear the results, and then we can make our, our assessment on what we hear.
But, but what, but, but still, the transparency level that the day-to-day operations of the school is, it.
One ten, that's what I'm, it's, they're, day-to-day.
It is, this is a committee, not of the board, it's a, it's a, it's a piece of the school's operation. You know, I, my transparency that I, when I, when people come in with issues is that, well, one, did you talk to the superintendent, cause he's very open, has a very open door policy? In most cases, he'll take you and show you what your complaint, you know, what, of what you're complaining about in the school and, and find the right people for you to talk to. When it comes to a committee like this, hey, I don't like the fact that, you know, that so-and-so is serving on the committee, superintendent, well, why, go talk to him, hey? And usually, I, I, that was a couple years ago, I sent someone like, to you, and you offered us them a seat, and guess what? They're on a committee now. So, you know, it, the minute we start over-governing the school when it comes to think, like, committee, these are committees of the school, not of the board, that, it, there's a mess that starts to be created there. There is a, you know, where do you, for example, where do you stop in us, that person then, or whoever it is, going and observing things? It could be basically every single day, we'd have some board member having to come in here because, oh, well, you know, we can't, we're not gonna be able to pick and choose, we should go to every meeting then. You know, that transparency's not there, it's, I can't, besides, if I went in there and said, oh, yeah, that was a great meeting that day, they did really, really, really well, and then the other twenty meetings that they had for the rest of the year, the bunch was, was horribly run and didn't, well, you know, cause it, it still doesn't really help you with your decision-making. The decision-making I get is, if I have, if there's something that's coming up and I'm like, I'm not sure of it, there's a phone call away, I'll submit an email, I'll get answers. And a lot of times, the stuff that you see in the board report, uh, or the report from the superintendent, or even his views are things that I had questions of, and he says, hey, you know what? There's something we'll get, get out to the rest of the board, cause I'm sure someone else will have that question. And we get the clarification piece like that, and that is, that's where they should come. So, I mean, if, you know, hey, these are the, you know, these are the topics that could affect this committee and steer it to the, the left or the right, and I don't like the way this is going. Mr. LaLance, could you make sure that, you know, within this committee, are any of these things being discussed, or any of these things being influenced, or is there anyone on there that's a, that's influencing it more to the right or to the left? Those are the questions you can have, and they'll be honest with you and come back and say those things to you. I mean, if you have to sit in there and see that, then that's, I don't even know how you're gonna see that in one meeting, if it was just an observer of one meeting. You're, you, you know, it, it, you ask the questions to the superintendent, that's, and there was a time period where, when I was first on the board, that we had, we encouraged that. You know, we had, you know, by the such-and-such date when we made the, made the agenda, submit any questions you have for the superintendent, and that's where, that was back when Dr. Fuster was here. Um, and she would have all those questions answered for the board meeting and have everything shared out, so that everyone had, had that. You know, have, have you a- asked any questions that way of this committee yet for the superintendent?
I have not.
To get a small snapshot of the entire process from the entire year by sitting in one, what, possibly hour-long meeting? So, you could ask the superintendent that also, right? All right, well, I mean, unless you're gonna make a motion and go through, I mean, is it?
Yeah, no, not.
All right. Hey, yeah, any other discussion on that topic then? Anything else on this topic for anyone else? All right, any other new business then?
I was just gonna bring up, um, I said at last night that all the themes are kind of being adopted by, um, people in the community. So, last year we had adopted Kara, uh, just, you know, to put a basket down and such and such, you know? And we were thinking of her, whatever, so, I thought, maybe we could do that for more stuff. Is there anything, yeah?
Awesome.
I'll be shopping. You just gotta hand me the money.
Uh, Mike, I thought you were shopping instead of telling her for her.
No, I don't know. So, I just thought that would be a good idea. I don't, I mean, we have time, so, like, yeah.
All right.
Like, when would her last meeting be?
Her last meeting of the year?
June sixteenth.
Yeah, so, then, so, maybe we'll put on a show.
If she's here, I mean, well, if, if, there's no game, I mean, she could technically have a game that night, but.
Well, it's not, I mean, he can, I can always tell her or whatever, but, um, I just thought that.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right, any other new business? A board member comments? Um, just the one thing, I want to commend the Billings and Grounds crew, the, everything has looked phenomenal. You know, now that we're in the full swing of, of, of Spring Three sports, is it Winter Nine? I mean, um, yeah, I know, now that we're in this, you know, the, the full swing of this, I mean, the fields are fantastic out there, the grounds look phenomenal. I know a lot of people just in passing, waiting for kids to pick up, you know, that complimented them, so please make sure that they, uh, Dan Bissell and his crew know that everything outside and in the indoor, in facilities indoors, obviously with wrestling and stuff, that people have been really, you know, pleased with. All right, anything else? Or entertain a motion to adjourn? All those in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or abstaining, motion carries. We are adjourned.